My name is Lupita Sanchez Cornejo. I'm Chair of the LAUSD Compensation Review Committee. We're going to call this meeting to order. Can we get roll call, please, City Clerk?
Madam President, Madam Chair, the present -- at present is Danielle Forbes, Mark Henderson, Efren Martinez, Julie Menendez, Dolores Spears, and I believe Alice Goff just walked in. All members are present and accorum, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes? I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item number one, Miss City Clerk?
Item number one is discussion and possible action related to a resolution establishing the salaries and benefits for the LAUSD Board of Education pursuant to Los Angeles City Charter Section 804. And Madam Chair, there are speaker cards. If you'd like to have them come and speak on this item as well as general public comment at this time?
Yes, please. Would like to take public comment now.
There's a card. Mr. Puppet?
Thank you, Mr. Puppet.
You will have two minutes, one minute for item one and one minute for general public comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much. I attended the LAUSD School Board meeting to review the new seven-member body. They're very nice people, aren't they? Four of them are Trump school advocates and three are really old guys that support the union, the dying teacher union that's going to drain. Maybe the teachers should hire Brian Dorsey and they can get that big money like the DWP. Well, I digress. So I see today the General Counsel with hello there, General Counsel. Yes, he's here from the LAUSD Board. He violated my Brown Act rights, didn't he? Yes, and we took care of that with General Counsel who oversees his work. So yes, I reviewed it, $125,000 a year, but it's not tax-free. So I want you to adjust it upward so that the member pays the tax and gets a net $125,000 salary. Isn't that fair? Why are teachers and why are teacher union members paying income taxes? It's fucking wrong. They should have a tax-free salary. It makes no sense to strap them with additional tax burden, as Justice Brandeis said in his Supreme Court. Well, that was in 1900 before Woodrow Wilson fucked the country up. But I digress. I'm sorry. Yes. So I support the increase, $50,000 if you have outside employment, a 125. I appreciate your work and I'm glad Nuri Martinez is no longer on the board because she's a loser. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Herman? You have one minute for item one and one minute for general public comment, two minutes total.
Good evening. And regarding the blank check for corruption, I'm in favor of a blank check for corruption because on behalf of the benefits of those in regards to LAUSD Board, it's apparent that we need more money so that we could have better services, better programs, and likely better activities for our kids and the community, mainly our homeless veteran kids who the LAUSD has discriminated against based on HHH. And I'm here to bitch, bitch, bitch regarding the pimp Nuri Martinez who no longer is a part of your staffing, which is a good reason why I come here to bitch on behalf of the public's interest. And rhetorical to that blank check for corruption, David R. Holmquist, General Counsel for the District, H-O-L-M-Q-U-I-S-T, in regards to my service dog and the discrimination under Title II and Title III of the ADA is a reminder that no ADA does not require a service animal to wear a vest, an ID tag, or a specific harness to say that the fucking animal is what? Disabled? No, you're discriminating against the person with the disability that has a service animal, like our veterans that go through PTSD or whatever nonsense you discriminate against people. I suffer from PTSD, not because of my action, but because the fucking district allowed it to happen to me in 2008. And now you will see what my General Counsel, Mr., for the record, Mr. Robin Terrence, will say to the District in regards to my service dog.
Thank you for your comments.
So please have respect for people's disabilities.
Thank you for your comments. Any other discussion on item one from the committee? Any discussion from the committee members on item number one?
We're talking about the resolution, right?
Yes. Any questions, Ms. Goff?
I don't know if it's me. I just have a question for clarification on number nine. I mean, I know what it -- I know what the intent is. It reads that any additional compensation provided to the board members would have a de minimis impact on the LAUSD budget. So additional to what? You know?
I think the -- any additional compensation means the -- it's reflecting the increase that was proposed.
The new amount versus -- but again, I know what the intent is, but I don't know if down the road that's clear to someone. The intent, obviously, is that this is an addition or it's a change, addition change to what is currently being provided. But when you say additional compensation, could that be things like?
Retirement.
Mileage or per diem or?
Ms. Goff? If I may, so would you be recommending -- because I had it here as well, that word compensation didn't sit very well to me either. How would you feel about changing that word? Say, not necessarily additional compensation, but, oh my goodness, City?
Increase in?
Increase in compensation?
Yeah. At least, because it at least says that there's something already there as opposed to?
Okay, that an increase in compensation, does that?
An any additional increase to in compensation.
Oh, yes, Ms. City Attorney?
Or even able to?
I can just give you a little bit of historical background on that provision. I'm Valerie Flores with the City Attorney's Office.
Okay, thanks. Y'all were looking.
I staffed the original Compensation Commission. So this board doesn't have the jurisdiction to award benefits like medical benefits and per diem and those sorts of -- they are considered compensation as opposed to salary, which you do set. So I think the original intent of number nine, which was similar in the original resolution adopted by the very first Measure L Committee, was that in general, four things like that for mileage reimbursement, for medical benefits, that whenever the board members are -- even though you don't have jurisdiction over it, you would want to make sure that nothing that's awarded in terms of a whole compensation package is taking anything away from the students. So it was just more of a -- again, because you don't technically have jurisdiction over non-salary compensation items, it was a way to express your preference that in the future when the board members may get additional non-salary compensation measures, that they not be so generous as to negatively impact the students.
Would you still like to amend to say increase? I see what -- I think what a question is wants to make sure that it's clear that we're not increasing mileage or?
You could say non-salary compensation if you wanted to clarify.
No, actually.
Actually, I think it's a salary increase. It is a salary.
Oh, so you want number nine to address salary?
Correct.
So when, in the off years, when they are allowed to make up to a 2% adjustment? Because that -- salary adjustments are governed by the charter. After you adopt your final number by resolution, let's say it's $125,000 a year, our city charter will govern any additional salary increases for board members during the intervening five years until a new commission is impaneled. So there's already a limit that it can't go over 2%. And again, I believe this provision nine related to non-salary compensation matters like per diems and cars and health benefits.
Hi, Paul Truart, TAO's office, Employee Relations Division. The way I read this, and maybe this would be helpful to you, is replacing the word "any" with "the proposed." Is that what you intended to say? So that the proposed additional compensation provided to board members would have a de minimis impact? Because you're talking about the difference in what they're making now versus what you would like them to make.
Right.
And you're trying to make a statement that the increase that you are proposing would have a de minimis effect on the budget. So I would?
I mean, that's how --
Okay.
That's what I think it should say.
Okay.
But that's not exactly how I'm reading it.
As someone who didn't draft the motion but who's been paying attention, to the extent that I have, that's how I read number nine in your resolution. So you would say that the proposed additional compensation? And then going backwards, someone would say, oh, it was the additional compensation that was proposed by this resolution?
Right.
That we're talking about having a de minimis impact?
As opposed to anything else that would come?
Correct.
You know, per whatever else is in place for?
Ms. Goff, would you like to make amendment to the resolution?
So say that again, Paul.
I can repeat it, so it would be that number?
Clarification from Ms. Flores.
Pardon?
So I just wanted to get clarification before we finalize your possible amendment. So the -- after our decision here, does the City Charter's jurisdiction in terms of any salary adjustments, is it larger than the jurisdiction we have or is it also only with respect to salary?
It's also only with respect to salary. But if I may, I think if you -- if what you were trying to accomplish by number nine is to say that you believe that this new salary that you are resolving to adopt today, it's your determination that that will only have a de minimis impact?
Yes.
On the overall LAUSD budget because of its size and the relatively small nature of the increase? We can reword it to say something like -- and I wouldn't say the proposed, because this resolution will be the actual thing that accomplishes the new salary. So I would say that the?
How about the word "new"?
Yeah, the new salary.
The new additional compensation.
Again, I would stay away from compensation because that is technically different than salary. You're adopting a new salary.
Okay.
So I would say the salary adopted hereby, provided to board members, is de minimis, will have a de minimis impact on the LAUSD budget. So the salary or the additional salary provided to the board members adopted hereby will have a de minimis impact on the LAUSD budget. Does that capture what you were trying to accomplish, Commissioner Goff?
I mean, I think that was the intent or that was a big part of the discussion, that in fact it would not have an impact on the budget. And so I just wanted to -- I mean, I knew what our intent was. I don't know if somebody reading it down the road would read it in the same way.
Thank you for that clarification. So do we accept that?
Yeah, no, I don't -- yeah.
Madam Chair, I do have a additional -- well, I'm perfectly fine with that one. I don't know if we want to?
The way it was now, the suggestion? Okay, so?
Let me get that again.
Could you repeat the suggestion?
Ms. City Clerk, can you repeat number nine as Ms. Flores?
Sure. The suggested language is the additional salary provided to the board members adopted hereby would have a de minimis impact on the LAUSD budget.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. You had one more change, Mr. Moore?
Well, I had one more suggestion here where?
Which item?
It's the first, where it says, "Be it further resolved," the very first one.
Okay.
So it says, "Be it further resolved that board members who accept the $125,000 salary shall devote their entire time to duties related to their office and not receive any other outside compensation." That outside compensation, is that really our intent or is it the any other source of employment income? Because many other individuals, many individuals may have?
Retirement.
Retirement and only a -- some stuff, some type of other income.
I agree, but I think the language should be consistent.
So talk about active salaries versus compensation.
Yes, sir. So my recommendation would be to strike the word outside compensation and replace it with?
Another source of employment income?
Correct.
Yeah, the language should be consistent, I agree.
All right. I'll go with that motion.
Source of employment income?
Another source of employment income instead of other outside compensation.
Would you like to make a similar change to number two? It doesn't easy to act and order you, but it would like to have a parallel?
To keep it consistent?
Okay.
Yeah, we need to.
Where?
That's all I have, Madam.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Well, no, but it's correct.
Can I, I mean, can I hear how number two, what the proposed change is for number two, how that would read?
Ms. Flores, thank you.
So I would propose that you consider deleting the phrase that says "any compensation for their services" and replace it with another source of employment. So it would read?
Okay.
If they do not receive another source of employment income other than provided in state law.
Oh, here, line two.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
I'm sorry.
Okay. One more time, right.
Now, can you repeat it? Because I couldn't even identify the language.
Yeah, so it would now read, after the $125,000, if they do not receive, and then new words, another source of employment income, and then pick up with the word on the next line, "other than that provided in state law for Board of Education members."
Yeah, that makes sense. It was choppy in here.
Thank you, Ms. Flores.
What is this for? So just to be clear, we're striking "any compensation" and "for their services"?
Correct.
Okay. So they do not receive another source of employment income other than?
Okay. Ms. City Clerk, can I have you read number two as proposed with the new amended language, please?
Sure. So for number two, in its entirety, it would read, "Each school board member may choose his or her level of salary compensation such that he or she may accept a salary of $125,000 if they do not receive another source of employment income other than that provided in state law for Board of Education members, etc., etc."
Any comments from the committee?
So would it be follow -- would it, number one, follow the same then?
Yes. Yes, Ms. Goff.
Can I hear number one read in its entirety as changed, please?
So for number one, it would say, "Each school board member may choose his or her level of salary compensation such that he or she may accept a salary of a board member at $50,000 if they receive another source of employment income," period or semicolon.
Ms. City Attorney, can we have you? In order to be consistent, should we also amend number one to be consistent with number two and say another source of?
Yeah, actually, I thought number one was changed and that's why I asked if you want to also change number two.
Right.
Change to number one.
Yeah, that's what we said. I just wanted to hear.
Yes.
I'm just looking at grammar.
But I believe whether one was the first resolve clause?
Correct.
Second resolve clause was changed.
Right.
So that one says that board, "Be it further resolved that board members who accept the $125,000 salary shall devote their entire time to duties related to their office and not receive another source of employment income."
Correct. That's actually what we had changed. So we should go back to number one as well and make that consistent. Can you please read number one now with the new language, just so that we're all on the same page?
Number one is each school board member may choose his or her level of salary compensation such that he or she may accept a salary of a board member at $50,000 if they receive another source of employment income.
Okay, then it would say "for their services."
For their services, the last part.
Right, okay. Why do we need "for their services"?
Any other comments from the committee?
Last one, it was strike in the number two, "for their services."
Right. Strike it again.
Yes, strike that. So it would?
Yeah, you don't need that.
Another source of employment.
To number one.
Yes. To be consistent with number two.
Right. You don't need "for their services."
Can we recess so we, to give you time to actually make those edits on the resolution? So five minutes, 10 minutes?
10.
We're going to recess the meeting for 10 minutes to actually make changes on to the resolution.
Excuse me, are there any other changes?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Goff, you had a?
Look, the secretary and me, number, under the whereas the committee has number one, should the "of" at the first, at the end of number one be struck? It's either with an annual budget of blah blah or an annual budget exceeding. Is "of" exceeding, correct? The whereas, page two, whereas, number one, whereas the committee has made the following findings, number one, LAUSD is an exceptionally large governmental agency with an annual budget exceeding?
Okay.
Rather than "of" exceeding? Scratch the "of."
Okay, yes.
Okay. Uh huh, that's correct, semi.
I think there should also be semicolons throughout until we get to the last one, correct?
Okay.
Correct.
Until we get to number nine and not the period.
Or one or the other. It's sort of like?
So Ms. City Clerk, on number one, we're going to delete the word "of." And then number two, instead of a period at the end, we're going to add a semicolon. Number three, we're going to remove that last period and add a semicolon. Number five, we're going to remove that period and add a semicolon.
You may also delete the "and" after number eight.
Delete the number, the word "and" after number eight.
And number nine.
Any other changes on those, the wording under findings?
Oh, no, because actually that's the last.
I'm going to go back to the committee one more time. Any other recommendations for edits?
I have none, Madam Chair.
Ms. Goff? And then? Ms. Flores?
And number nine? Okay, thank you. We will make that correction on number nine. We will make that correction on number nine. Okay, we will recess for 10 minutes.
Further resolves, they do carry.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold.
This, which one are you? And.
So, yeah, well, no, 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 on the, on the "be it further resolved."
Okay, Ms. Forbes, huh?
Page three, on the, um, penultimate, "be it further resolved," there's a period there, but I think it's semicolon "and" because we have one more "be it further resolved."
I just don't know what this means. What does in counterparts mean?
So where it says "as provided in the state law," then semicolon?
Yes.
Yes, semicolon "and."
Okay. Ms. City Clerk, did you get that, uh, edit?
Can I just, do I also want to, uh, delete the "and" in the prior paragraph?
It's in all of them.
In all of them, yeah. That's, that's correct. That's correct.
It's in all, so we just, instead of a period, we want to add a semicolon.
An "and."
And "be it further resolved that this resolution may be executed," okay.
Can I have my middle initial "m"?
Since you're fixing it, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Madam Chair and fellow colleagues, I, I wanted to, um, throw something, um, your way for slight consideration. Uh, I've been doing quite a bit of thinking regarding of, of how this committee got to this, uh, to where we're at right now in regards to being put such a, um, in a tough position where, where previous committees had not, um, in my opinion, adequately, um, adjusted, uh, the, the compensation, uh, for which, uh, I'm sure all of you have seen, whether it be at the LA Times, social media, whatever it may be, um, some criticized, some are for, some are against it, what, what our decision, uh, was last week. Um, but I think, uh, and again, I'm just throwing it out for this committee, um, that if there was a mechanism to prevent a further gap, such a gap to, to continue to exist, uh, in between the, the, every five years when this committee actually meets, uh, I think that'll help all future committees. And where I'm getting at is, is the state has a particular, uh, compensation committee as well, uh, that, uh, meets every year. And they determine, which they just did not so long ago, I think, uh, last month, um, a, the compensation of, of the state legislature, um, the senators, the assembly members, the governor and everyone. Um, what I would kind of, uh, throw out there for consideration is maybe whatever gap they decide to either go up or down. For example, this year they went from 104,000, uh, for state legislators, uh, to 107. So, uh, they can easily, could have gone down that 2.5% or, as they did, uh, which, which was increased. Um.
Madam, your attention please, madam, your attention please. We are conducting testing of the fire and life safety systems in the building beginning at 7:00 P.M. 7:00 P.M. will start something hot and showing visual alerts for emergency. Fire testing begins at 7:00 P.M.
So, so fellow colleagues, uh, what, what I would recommend is that, uh, if we were to somehow tie it to that, if we were to somehow tie it to that committee, of only the difference, in this case, it would have been, uh, $2,000 that the, uh, the, the committee would have received. Does that make sense? Um, I don't know if I'm getting my point across appropriately.
But I don't know if we could do it.
Is she with that?
Okay.
The, the board compensation is, um, established in the LA City Charter, and so there would have to be a charter change to, you've come up with a, a good suggestion to prevent gaps. But, but there already actually is in the city charter currently, a provision, um, for adjustments in off years. So it's, um, Charter Section 804-H, and it says, "On an annual basis in years when the committee is not performing a compensation review, the Board of Education may increase the compensation and other benefits of individual or all board members beyond the amount established by the committee in an amount not to exceed 2% of the applicable total combined amount of compensation and benefits. Any increase made pursuant to this subsection shall be effective upon approval by the Board of Education." So during the five years until the next compensation committee meets, the Board of Education has been delegated the authority to, to give a raise up to a total of 2% a year or a total of 10% over the five years between your committee and the next committee that meets.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. So does that answer?
Thank you, yes, yes. I wa, I wasn't trying to, uh, pawn off the responsibilities onto, uh, another committee. I was talking about more in the middle, which you did answer.
Okay.
So actually, that, that would, that.
Wonderful.
That, that actually plays a perfect role in what I was going to try to accomplish, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, before, let's, uh, go back and see if there are any other comments on the resolution.
May I have one thing?
Yes, Mr. Henderson?
Could I have the, uh, city clerk add my middle initial?
Oh.
E, too? That's it.
Yes, absolutely, we can do that. Ms. Golf, do you have any other comments?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Forbes, do you have any other comments before, no, Mr. Henderson?
Thanks, Brad.
Mr. Martinez?
No middle name, ma'am.
Ms. Menendez?
No.
Ms. Spears?
I'm going to make up a middle name.
So we will now recess for 10 minutes while we make edits to the resolution language right now. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to come back into session after the recess. I also, uh, Ms. City Clerk, would like to open public comment for one minute. Can you read there, uh? Is it Mr. Puppet?
Yes, and Mr. Herman.
Yes, so thank you so much. Not violating the Brown Act, unlike you, sir, over there in the back with the laptop. Yes. So that's good, today's the final meeting. Now we will get more payments, and yes, retirement income does not disqualify you from the $125,000, only if you're actively employed. I missed it because I listened to the city attorney, but you, sir, caught the mistake I made. You're right, only outside active income by gainful employment should limit to $50,000 compensation. So if you own all kinds of rental real estate, you still get the $125. See, he caught you, city attorney. I got an infraction, and now the retirees on the board will get the $125. Thank you, good job.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, did you have a?
See, so the structure of California labor law is not unconstitutional, but it allows free speech and the right to be heard with transparency to correct and basically cure and correct programmatic access and not deny the services that we render on behalf of the public to speak out and criticize programs and service and activities based on LAUSD. So when it comes to the structure of how to pay, who to pay, when they should be paid, you should keep in mind there are people that are disabled and retirees, and they need and depend on that income. So one day when one of you slip and fall or accidentally are retaliated on the job by LAUSD, you will know exactly how to respond under 42 U.S.E. like I have. Fuck you.
Thank you.
Ms. City Clerk, as I review the resolution, I want to, uh, go to page number three, finding number eight. I see it in our first draft, but I believe that the word "and" fell off after income.
So.
Yes, that was one of the recommendations to remove the word "and" because it appears in item number nine, finding number nine.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me, I'm sorry, you're right, correct. Thank you. So we have, uh, received the resolution, we have incorporated all of the recommendations from the committee members, the city attorney has reviewed it, I have reviewed it, as has the city clerk, and so we now have the final resolution with all the recommended edits that were made during this meeting.
Can I make a motion?
Yes?
I would like to make a motion to accept the resolution as it has been presented.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned. I'd like, thank you all. Thank you very.